Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to the City Council's Special Meeting on the 2035. I'm going to turn the meeting over to our consultant. Welcome.
Thank you, Council. This evening, I wanted to give you a brief overview of where we are with respect to our drafting of the Future Land Use Map, as well as our draft Economic Development Chapter, number seven. While we've been here this week, we did have a good meeting with the Planning Commission on Tuesday, followed by what I thought was a successful community workshop Tuesday evening. We didn't have quite the audience or attendance that we had for the first community workshop, and I'm sure we're going to be working on that for community workshops in the future. Because, as we all want, we want to make sure there's as much community engagement and fingerprints all over this plan as possible. This is the next iteration of the Future Land Use Map, and I'm just going to waltz through several of the key land uses that we've identified in previous meetings, just to show you how we've constructed this and a little bit of the rationale behind this. And again, this is a point of departure where we're going to be presenting to you several iterations hence. So, again, there's a lot of work that still remains to be done on this map. We have tried to use conventional land use colors. We've provided shades of yellow to represent different densities of residential. Blue is primarily business park. And one thing that we are, with respect to the business park land uses, we'll talk about later, we're not just talking solely about office parks, but we're looking more at clean industrial, light manufacturing, those kind of land uses. So, to begin at the beginning, here is your, our planning area. This is the, the black line represents your city limits, and the outer red line represents the urban growth boundary. So, this is the area that we're principally concerned about. Early on, or, excuse me, a few months ago, we met with staff department heads and mapped out the areas that we felt were going to be the main growth areas over the next 20 years. So, that basically determined what areas we were not going to solely focus on during this planning horizon, which again is a 20- to 30-year planning horizon. So, by default, these became rural slash agricultural countryside land uses. This is also very important because it helps to preserve Murfreesboro as a freestanding community. It provides an open space, kind of buffer between, for example, Smyrna to the north. So, people will realize when they're entering and leaving the city of Murfreesboro. This land use represents parks and proposed greenways following Riparian River corridors. We, again, believe the greenways are an important piece of infrastructure to connect land uses in the future. These are your special use areas, your landfill, wastewater treatment plants, other large areas that are required by the city to support utilities' infrastructure. So, these, for the most part, are going to remain where they are. These gray areas represent heavy industry. Some are proposed, most of them are existing. These are mainly open pit, quarries, mines, those kind of uses. This is the first of the residential land uses. This is what we're referring to as suburban estate, a larger lot acreage of 1 to 5 acres. Most of this is within your urban growth boundary. There are still areas within the city limits that are a little bit larger acreages. We've been working with the planning department to confirm and verify that we have identified these correctly. And most of this has been through air photo interpretation using Google Earth, as well as your GIS and zoning maps. This, a little bit darker yellow, represents suburb, what we're calling suburban residential. Much of this remains within the city limits. This is what we, suburban residential, here we're getting slightly into zoning, where we're classifying this residential land use based on RS-15, RS-12, and RS-10 residential densities and zoning districts. This is what we're referring to as general residential, or Neighborhood Conservation III, again, an existing density of residential, some RS-10, RS-8, RS-4, RZ, RD, your, again, higher-density residential. And these are the areas where you have multifamily residential. What we're referring to, for the time being, is Neighborhood Conservation IV. Now, these are the areas that we're proposing certain residential densities. These will certainly change. We zoned, or not zoned, we classified these areas principally because of currently there's a lack of utilities' infrastructure to support a higher residential density. And speaking with Darren Gore and others, what we're probably going to, what we are going to do is classify these as probably suburban residential, but we're going to add notes on the map saying, "This land use classification will be possible once it's supported by utilities' These are the proposed suburban residential areas, again, a higher-density residential, a higher-density of residential development. More general residential. And areas where we're recommending additional multifamily development. We have several policies associated with the Future Land Use Map, and you can't really look at this land use map in isolation. One policy that we're recommending that the city employ is that multifamily residential will be used as a transition between, say, a single-family residential and a commercial highway, for example. There are two small areas that we've identified on the Future Land Use Map that we're calling Neighborhood Restoration. One area is down around the Patterson Park Community Center, going, extending north up to almost Main Street. A very strong neighborhood with all of the amenities and the bones that we'd like to see in your neighborhoods around the city. There are some blighted areas within this neighborhood, so it's a great neighborhood that's semi-intact, but will need some municipal intervention in the future. This is a, your public institutional land use. It's an existing land use that focuses on all of your public institutions, schools, governmental buildings, some large churches, not smaller churches, because they tend to be a little bit more transient than your larger churches. Neighborhood commercial is an important land use that is going to find its way more into the policies of this land use map rather than the future, policies of this chapter and the land use plan, rather than the Future Land Use Map, just because it's so small and it's going to be located in areas where there currently aren't roads and whatnot. But you will see more of this after we develop the thoroughfare plan. And then this is, these are the areas where we're recommending business park development, land use classification. And again, business park represents not only office parks, but some light manufacturing, clean industrial areas. And in a lot of areas, it's replacing the heavy industry. And this is principally because of our interest, as we've heard, for attracting more professional white-collar businesses. So, we'll come back to this area, or land use classification. And this is what we're referring to as urban-commercial mixed use. Much of it's centered right around your downtown area. We're proposing as what we're calling currently the bottoms area, which is down on the other side of Broad Street from where we currently are, extending northwest Broad Street. And then the red is your general commercial. We've called it auto-oriented commercial areas, a little bit less walkable, very accessible via vehicles, and what you principally find along your transportation corridors. All of these land uses have been vetted through or located based on the 2025 Transportation Plan. Again, we still have a long way to go as far as really analyzing this in greater detail. But together, all of these make up your Future Land Use Plan, map, excuse me. I did, I will, let me stop there and just ask if you all have any questions about the Future Land Use Map at this juncture, before I go into the Economic Development Chapter.
I might just add to what Mr. Tully had shared. We obviously had the community meeting the other day at Patterson Community Center, where residents interacted with the map and provided some comments and feedback. Ken DeKeast will be carrying those comments and feedback back to Texas as they begin to come up with the next version of the Future Land Use Map. Our planning staff and manager's office have likewise found some things that offered some suggestions to them as well. So, they'll take all of that when they return to Murfreesboro next time. That will include all of that feedback that we've received.
Sir, talk to us a little bit about TIFs, how they work, and how we can use them to encourage economic and rehabilitation development.
That we are going to talk a little bit about in the economic, or we have discussed in greater detail within the Economic Development Chapter. I am not the TIF specialist of our firm. My colleague Greg Flissrom, who was here up until this morning, he knows everything about TIFs, and in former lives has administered many TIFs for cities such as the city of Kansas City, Missouri. A TIF is a special taxation district where an increment of the taxes that local businesses pay to the city are focused on improvements within that particular district. So, there are taxes that are allocated to, for specific improvements within a district that's in need of additional assistance beyond just relying on the commerce and whatnot. TIFs can be used for a variety of things when it comes to, for example, restoring historic buildings, buildings that might have some abatement requirements or need to comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act, that kind of thing. TIF can be, kind of provide that gap in funding to make the numbers pencil out right. So, it's just another way of helping developers and builders satisfy the interests of the city and of that particular district. It's complicated, and I'm sorry that I can't provide you with a more granular definition. But I know that the city is working with a consultant out of Nashville, probably the, one of the foremost authorities in TIF districts in Tennessee, and exploring what might be possible here in the city. But we'll get into that, because in the Economic Development Chapter, we have discussed a number of different types of TIFs, that, one is a pay-as-you-go kind of TIF, and then there's another kind of TIF that is worthy of consideration. We also first mentioned tax increment financing, pay in lieu of taxes, pilot programs, and other special taxation districts within Chapter Two, the Growth Infrastructure and Capacity Chapter. So, we weren't meaning to be redundant, but we were providing additional, an additional level of detail within the Economic Development Chapter regarding TIF, because it's going to be a very important tool for you all to use when considering significant redevelopment projects.
And we certainly understand how important the Future Land Use Plan will be. You know, we were talking about the review. The Planning Commission has also seen this. There may be additional comments from the Planning Commission, but as Ken DeKeast and the sub-conseil Neil Schaefer work on the major thoroughfare plan, those roadways may also change the Future Land Use Plan. So, what you're seeing today really is kind of the early stages of it, with a good amount of work still to go.
Rob, for the public's knowledge, tell them what TIF means.
Tax increment financing.
Exactly.
And so, you would create a zone, draw a circle on a map, and then any investment that's made within that area, the new higher tax amount gets peeled off and redirected toward some of the project components. So, it becomes a win-win for the developer, for the city, and the community.
Any other questions about the Future Land Use Map, or some of our proposed land use classifications?
Didn't you have a meeting with some of the commercial developers the other day about this?
The staff did. We had invited the design community and the development community to, knowing, we want to make them aware what was happening, so that they can get copies of it and begin to comment on it. And I know they appreciated the outreach by the city. Ms. Moody led that effort to make sure that they were dialed into this, because from a day in and day out, they may pick this up as much as anybody. While important to the entire community, these will be some of our power users, and we want to make sure they are aware of it and could provide some feedback.
We do have, we do plan to have additional meetings with your development community. We discussed with the Planning Commission, Brett Keast discussed how we are going to be recommending, we talked about this a little bit last time, how we're recommending streaming, streamlining your zoning districts, particularly your residential districts to where you have fewer, right now you have about 16 residential zoning districts, and we're hoping to streamline that down to like maybe four or five with development options therein. This will be something that I'm sure your development community will really appreciate, as will your planning staff, because it will streamline the whole permitting process, review process, that kind of thing. And to some, to a large degree, the land use classifications reflect these kind of future recommendations.
Have you entertained talking to the banking community, because they're the ones that's going to end up doing, they have to be receptive during the financing. Rick, I'm not going to butt him on, he's not, he's something else. He's a planner, you know, he's a financial planner. But if the banking community is not sensitive to TIF, and that kind of, those kind of initiatives, then where does it go? Are you all going to try to get with them?
I think that's a very important point, Councilmember, that we do. We have had several listening sessions with different professional groups. The banking community, we do have bankers on our Comp Plan Task Force. We welcome meeting with as many people as possible through the course of this project. So, if we can set that up for the next time we're in town, we're all for that, and any others who we haven't met. So, we've had a few more than what we had planned, a few more listening sessions or focus group sessions than we had originally planned, but at this point, we're just, it's very important that we get as much public participation and engagement in this planning program as possible.
Yeah, the banking community, John Callow with CDBG, and Habitat, those folks, you know, that cater to folks that have a difficult time obtaining homes and, you know, affordable houses and all that kind of good stuff. You know, if you can, and it makes sense, you really need to touch base with them and see if, you know, if they even interested, because the money got to come from somewhere.
Yes, sir. We have met with John Callow several times. We, the last time we were in town, at the request of Habitat for Humanity, we met with them. Again, we are, we also attended a meeting that the mayor had set up with other nonprofit organizations previously. Again, we're welcome to participate in those kind of meetings with as many groups as possible.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to move on to the Economic Development Chapter. And I'm sorry that my colleague Greg Flissrom is no longer with us tonight. He was here the last couple of days. He is a very articulate economic development specialist, and we rely on him for all of our economic development kind of needs. I'm going to do my best to summarize what we have in your Economic Development Chapter as far as the opportunities, the challenges, and the recommendations, and some of the key priority kind of prospects that we see that you all need to consider, or we would like you to consider. First of all, as Greg was describing last night, we see economic development as a civic enterprise. It needs to be a specific business unit of the city that is proactive, that is specifically program-based, and very strategic. This is not so much marketing or branding levels of effort. There's not one silver bullet that's going to solve all of your economic development problems. Rather, it is so much silver buckshot, if you will. You need to approach economic development from an array of different angles. What's paramount is that we align our strategies with your city's strengths, as well as what we perceive as being the opportunities. We call a city such as Murfreesboro an eds. and meds. kind of community. Your key economic engines, your medical center, and MTSU, these are going to be principal economic drivers in the future as they are now. We're also, we have a lot of information in this chapter about what we call place-based economic development, really tapping into the resources that you have at bay, at your disposal. These are heritage resources, place-based resources, that young, talented professionals are really interested in being close to and living within. We talked a lot over this last several days about this new paradigm where no longer does the young talent, the young white-collar professionals, no longer do they move to where the businesses are, it's actually just the opposite. The businesses, as we see in Houston and Austin all the time, the businesses are moving to where the talent wants to live. So, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But we're very interested in how we can further tap into our regional location here. As Greg was mentioning over the last couple of days, all of the Economic Development journals and periodicals, Nashville, the Nashville metro area is always in these journals of touting all of the progress and the growth that they've made with respect to economic development. There are ways that we can tap into that further from a regional perspective. There are also interchanges and corridors that we're going to want to focus on in greater detail in the future, not only from a land use perspective, but also from economic, with regard to economic development. One in particular is the I-24 State Route 840 interchange. This is a prime area that we believe would be perfect for, of course, a large business park, maybe technology-oriented development center, that MTSU may or may not be participating in, although they own a large piece of property right there. Other corridors, like the extension of Veterans Parkway, a key corridor wrapping around the west side of the city going down to the Joby Jackson area, that's going to be a key economic development corridor as well, as will others such as Cherry Lane. Your downtown is a very important area, and the lands around downtown. This is the city's living room. This is where people are attracted to, not only corporate executives when they're driving around Murfreesboro, but young people. There's a sense of place here that we need to not only preserve, but expand upon. And then there are a whole range of different business opportunities with respect to the music industry, as we talk about in Chapter Seven, the aerospace, avionics, drone technologies, the programs at MTSU, where there are a series of dots out there, your local airport. How can we connect the dots and create some synergies therein? But the important thing here, as Greg was really focusing on over the last couple of days, is avoiding this mismatch between opportunities and your current capacities. We need to make sure that our strategies are aligned with our strengths, as well as our opportunities. We've talked a lot about how do we attract the young, professional, white-collar, they don't have to be young, white-collar, professional businesses and individuals compared to manufacturing and logistics. We never want to just turn our backs from manufacturing and logistics, but we're looking for another type of business. And so, when we're looking for the white-collar, professional types of business, those strategies are going to a little bit, be a little bit different than if we're looking for warehousing, distribution, manufacturing, logistics, those kind of business sectors. For example, when it comes to incentives, the professional technology sector, they're going to need more project-based incentives, whereas manufacturing and logistics, they're going to be looking for incentives for whoever the highest bidder is. Taxation, the professional technology business interests, they just want to make sure that taxation, taxes are fair, but the manufacturing, logistics kind of businesses, they're going to be looking for as low a taxes as possible. When it comes to neighborhoods and housing, your young, professional, white-collar, technology-oriented professionals are going to want a much more diverse range of housing typologies compared to manufacturing and logistics. They're going to want to make sure you have as affordable a housing as possible. So, it goes down the list, but what we're focusing on here is that the strategies, when you're focusing on a particular sector, are going to be slightly different than the strategies for another sector. When it comes to planning and land controls, these are incredibly important for your white-collar, professional, technology, business sector, because they want to ensure that their investment is going to be predictable. They're going to want to make sure that whatever grows up right beside them is going to be compatible with the investment that they've just put into that parcel of land. Compared to logistics and manufacturing, where they're going to see land controls as more of a hindrance, they're more interested in as few barriers to entry as possible. So, we talk about that in greater detail within the chapter. Some of the challenges that we've identified in this chapter, the city has done incredible work on economic development, the city, the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce, your Industrial Development Board. You've done amazing amounts of great work. However, we're still concerned that the internal capacity of the city needs to be expanded to realize a more granular level of effort, a granular level of opportunity. to realize a more granular level of effort, a granular level of opportunities. And I'll get into that in a moment. Another concern is the rapidity of land consumption and the competition therein as far as where or how can business, how can land be used for its highest and best value or use. We don't wanna see, like, key interchanges absorbed in so much residential development when they really should be preserved for more office, professional office, and other kinds of land uses. So that's an ongoing concern, and especially in this age where we're seeing so much rapid and accelerated growth. Housing and neighborhood diversity, we've been talking about this every time we're here, developing a more diverse housing typology to meet the needs of a younger, professional group. Developing additional partnerships with groups like MTSU and others is gonna be very important. And this is, and I know you're probably tired of hearing about me bringing up the number of franchises in this community. I mean, I'm not sure how you prevent franchises from coming in to your community. There's a demand for them, for restaurants and other things. But a lot of the money that is taken up by franchises leaves your community. So we really need to focus on how can we stimulate a greater level of entrepreneurism? How can we focus on bi-local kinds of programs to make sure that we're growing this kind of economic development capacity within, rather than relying on people coming in and kind of siphoning off a lot of that disposable income? So what we are recommending as far as building an internal economic development capacity, this can start very small, and again, we're not, by no means are we trying to duplicate the excellent work that the Chamber of Commerce has done, but we're suggesting that we start out with a small, one-to-two-person division or branch of your planning department where people can start, two people could start focusing on putting deals together, identifying redevelopment properties, assembling land, working with small businesses to help them grow, that kind of thing. Again, the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce has done great work, but their focus is more, it's a little bit different, it's a little bit higher altitude, if you will. They're focusing on business recruitment and workforce development, which two are very, they're very important economic development aspects for your city. But again, we're looking at something a little bit different when it comes to redevelopment within your city and how we can start growing this kind of entrepreneurial capacity. So we talk a little, a lot, actually a lot about the economic development roles of a lower-altitude economic development arm of the city, and how they can interface with the Rutherford County Chamber of Commerce. But we're talking about Main Street recruitment, developer recruitment, deal structuring, land assembly, all those things that are gonna be needed to redevelop areas like you have across Broad Street, the Bottoms area, or the area, as we were talking about last night, along Northwest Broad Street going up to Thompson Lane. There's a lot of redevelopment opportunity there, where you can open up views to your river. Waterfront development here is not as valued as it seems to be in other parts of the country. We really see a major opportunity there, especially because it's in such close proximity to your medical center, the fountains, business park, and elsewhere. That kind of redevelopment where you might add, and what we've done is, we've identified that as so much urban, commercial, mixed-use land use on the future land use map, because we feel that with a higher density, really quality, multifamily residential development, it would make the gateway area, the medical center, the fountains, all that much more bikeable and walkable. It would reduce traffic significantly, and the amount of distance you'd have to drive to go to these places. We also really focus on how we can engage and partner with MTSU. We're not suggesting that we approach MTSU and ask them to do things. As Greg was mentioning last night, we really need, the city needs to have skin in the game and identify potential partnerships and approach MTSU with those kind of partnerships. Expand the campus activity sphere. MTSU, I think we would all agree, is somewhat isolated. You can't tell that you have one of the largest universities in Tennessee right here in Murfreesboro, until you get right onto MTSU. So how can we expand the campus activity sphere through developing business incubators, business accelerators? We talked a lot about that at the task force meeting last night. Potentially develop an innovation district where the city might be able to seed additional innovation and entrepreneurial activity. Creating events downtown that go beyond just entertainment for students to participate in. These might be associated with municipal government, but there are a lot of ways we can harness the strength and the vitality of your student body. Developing a student village, and we've talked about this a little bit and identified an area on the future land use map where there's no real commercial area for MTSU students. I grew up in Charlottesville, Virginia. There was, right outside of the University of Virginia is a commercial strip that caters specifically to students, but it's a fun place. There are bars and that kind of nightlife, but there's also a whole range of other commercial activities that draw students and help them have places to gather. So creating a student village that would be adjacent to MTSU is an important consideration. Because what we wanna do is not only keep students here on the weekends, but hopefully they'll want to stay in Murfreesboro after they graduate. Another key priority, as we were mentioning earlier, is investing in downtown. This really is, again, your city's living room. But when you leave the immediate block of your Courthouse Square, it starts to erode with respect to contributing elements and the quality and character of your downtown. So there are a lot of opportunities, and I've shown this particular slide almost every time we're here, but there's just so much, there's a lot of marginal development immediately outside of your downtown that could be revitalized and to where the urbanity or the urban character could be extended a little bit further. At some point, we're gonna, and we were talking about this a lot last night, we're gonna need to start thinking about going vertical. How many stories are we talking about? What is palatable? Of course, these are market considerations. This is where TIF and other special taxation districts are gonna be increasingly important because we're gonna need to start considering structured parking. And at usually about $25,000 to $30,000 a parking space, that becomes very exorbitant for a developer who's trying to come in and do some redevelopment in your downtown. So there's gotta be a mechanism or a funding stream that will help provide that gap in the amount of money a developer needs to make a deal work. We talked about last night as well, trying to list your downtown on the National Register of Historic Places. This is an important consideration because as a National Register listed downtown, your buildings will be open to significant tax credits and incentives, 25% rehabilitation tax, for example. It's more of an incentive-based program, not a regulatory program. Being listed on the National Register does not force you to paint your building a certain color or anything like that. So there are a lot of significant opportunities associated with that kind of listing. So we had talked about maybe inviting your state historic preservation officer down to Murfreesboro to take a tour of your downtown. Parking, as we talked about, will remain a problem. That's usually a good problem, rather than a bad problem. It is, it becomes an inconvenience and can be frustrating, but that's why we're gonna need to consider structured parking in the future. Building renovations, again, TIF and other special districts will be important when it comes to preserving the character, but also bringing some light to some of your dark second floors of your downtown buildings. Having a facade improvements program where the city or Main Street program can help fund facade improvements, again, to improve that historic character of downtown is also an important consideration. And then again, just infill development. There are so many areas or blocks immediately outside of your downtown that are just ripe for redevelopment. We talked at length last night about what is the first thing your downtown needs, and maybe this is something we can talk about tonight, but we've been recommending that, and we've talked about this before, but the importance of having more housing downtown, more affordable housing. One of our comp plan task force members was, is a Realtor downtown, and he was explaining that the price of residential development or housing downtown is like $150 to $180 a square foot. How can we create another housing type, maybe a high-quality, multifamily housing type that would appeal to a younger audience that might be much more affordable? And we talked about this for the last couple of days, but in a lot of ways, there's a stigma attached to multifamily housing, that it's never of the quality that you wanna see, and then that stigma then extends to the people that live within multifamily housing. It doesn't have to be that way. It's certainly not that way in Houston. I mean, we have really high-quality, multifamily housing. Much of it is like, much of the three-story multifamily housing is now being replaced with five- and six-story mid-rise multifamily housing. We're experiencing growth to the tune of about 9,000 people a month. So that's almost a million people a decade. It's just crazy how fast we're growing, the Houston metro area. I think there's a lot we can learn from how, and we'll talk about this in future meetings, how Houston has diversified its economy to support a whole range of different business Again, we can't underscore the importance of the opportunities associated with what we're referring to as the Bottoms area. I've heard since then, this week, that that's not the term most people refer to the area on the other side of Broad Street. So I'm interested in what we ought to be calling that. I did hear somebody call it Lobro, and I don't know if that was a recent nickname, but that's cool. It's kinda like Lodo in Lower Downtown, or Soco, like South Congress Street in Austin. But there's so much opportunity there. There are some marginal buildings and whatnot, some marginal land uses that, depending on how we redevelop that area, some of that could remain for some time, some of it's gonna need to be removed, but it's the perfect area to extend an urban kind of commercial area. It might be funky, kinda arty, as Greg was mentioning, gritty, but that's exactly what these millennials are looking for. They're looking for just that kind of thing. They're not interested in the more antiseptic, clean kind of character of places that we might be interested in. So there's a lot of opportunity that we see for any number of different types of market ventures. And by no means do we wanna to move the farmers' markets that you have around the Courthouse Square, but there are ways that we can augment that or create additional kind of market activities that could, where your Courthouse Square market could spill over into that area. Things like your Mayday Brewery or a coffee roasting outfit. The arts, and I was driving around Houston, we have two or three different arts districts, and they're all in very industrial kind of warehousy areas where artists that, like welders and those types, they need a lot of room to spread out their metal and all that kind of stuff. So it's never a clean kind of antiseptic area. You need to have this layout yards and that kind of thing for certain types of artists. We have this in Houston, you might be familiar with it, we have this art car parade. It's the biggest one in the country, but that's one of the chief artistic areas within our community. So we have these huge expansive areas where people are creating these art cars. It's pretty amazing, so, for another time. Again, when it comes to tax increment financing, we do have a lot of information on TIF in this chapter, as in Chapter Two, for your review. This is gonna be a very important redevelopment kind of tool for you, for your use. As we were talking about, we have replaced much of your heavy industry with a business park land use classification. For the time being, as I was mentioning, the business park land use classification includes not only office park development, but also light industrial and manufacturing uses. After talking with your planning department, I think we're going to reuse your light industrial land use classification and divide that out a little bit more. But when it comes to incenting office development, we have several recommendations here as far as the need to conduct office market surveys, interviewing brokers and property owners, planning and zoning for office parks where those ought to occur, making sure that the requisite infrastructure, and that includes wireless, Wi-Fi infrastructure, broadband infrastructures extended as well, extending industrial development board abatements to office projects, not just industrial projects. I know that the IDB has that capacity. Explore and expand the use of TIF, and then get into marketing, facilitation, and deal Again, when it comes to entrepreneurship, looking into business incubators, partnerships with MTSU to create business accelerators, maybe an innovation district, developing, as Greg was mentioning last night, cities of your size, most of them have a revolving loan program, mentoring networks, grant competitions. Maybe the city can, or industrial development order, or the appropriate organization can provide seed monies in a competitive fashion for people to apply for when they have a business proposition that seems very viable. Really focusing on a bi-local kind of campaign, so we can really, again, foster that entrepreneurial activity, so we're not relying on franchises as much as we do currently. And then, again, developing more interdependent relationships between the city chamber, MTSU, and Main Street organizations. Again, many of our recommendations are suggesting that the city develop an internal economic development capacity. This by no means is meant to replace the excellent work the chamber does. It's at a different altitude, and the scope of this capacity would be completely different, but again, interdependent and complementary of what the work the chamber is doing. So that's where we are at this point. I'm happy to entertain any additional questions that you all might have. And we fully expect, this was a draft chapter, we released it early just to make sure that we're on the right track. We're gonna wanna talk about economic development, prospects, and recommendations in subsequent meetings. We hope to be back in mid-December where we're gonna be showing you our latest future land use map, but also we're gonna be rolling out our first draft of your thoroughfare plan, and that's gonna have a profound impact on the future land use map. So any questions that you might have?
How do you balance? You know, we're seeing a lot of things that are coming to us. So as you see these comprehensive plans come into place, you know, as a contractor, whenever the code changes, you'll see like a mad rush, and we see this, of people trying to pull permits. So with these plans, do you see, you know, a rush to try to get things rezoned as the plan, people try to anticipate a plan coming into place?
That's a very excellent question, Mayor, and I think we are going to, we anticipate that there's gonna be some degree of that. that there's going to be some degree of that. As we were talking about, we talked about that at length last night with the task force, and I use the example, and I'm not necessarily recommending this, but we're currently working with a city in Mississippi, Macomb, Mississippi, who is, that city is, and now the rapidity or acceleration of development has kind of waned, because they were being completely impacted by this Tuscaloosa Marine shale play. Well, all the shale plays in the country have kind of stopped for the time being, it seems like. But their city was being completely engulfed in these man camps, these big encampments of workers, that were focusing on the downstream commercialization of these shale plays. And so, their whole economy was being flipped over. And we were in the process of developing this comprehensive plan for them. Well, it's not necessarily, the plan will be adopted, and it's a policy document, as this one is, but it's not focusing on how to address those immediate growth dilemmas. So, what we did was, we put into place an interim ordinance that really focused on truck traffic, on how these kind of encampments would be developed, so as to not strain the city's municipal infrastructure, that kind of thing. So, one option would be to consider maybe putting into place certain interim ordinances that would be an expansion of what you currently have, just to make sure that if there is an acceleration of development activity as a result of the future land use map, that you'd be covered. So, that would be one option. Because once the comprehensive plan is adopted, you're going to need to go back and make sure your land development regulations is in step with your comprehensive plan, and you're enforcing the policies of the comprehensive plan. That's going to take, you know, 18 to 24 months or so, so.
Mayor, great point. I think that's been one of the reasons when we met with the development community, when we had the community meeting the other day, we were letting those audiences know, this is just a beginning version of the map. While we understand as that starts to take shape a little bit more, we may have, you know, parties that may want to come in and try to come in under the other zoning, and we may need to see what's the best way to handle that. We're trying to send the message right now to avoid that rush, to say, we want your input. If you see things with the map that need adjustment, let's focus on that. But it is certainly something, we've had some conversations with Kendi Keest, and we'll need to get ready for.
Any other questions?
Aaron, we talked last night a lot about that Veterans Parkway, 84024 area. And, you know, just tell you guys, you know, the other guy, Chris is his name?
Craig.
Craig, was extremely adamant about the idea that we really needed to push towards figuring out how we could make that, you know, business park offices kind of a white-collar, if you want to call it that, whatever type of job area, that he felt like that was the best use for that. I thought it was really interesting. If you look out there, that's a whole bunch of green grass. That's a good place, might be a good place for us to start. One of the things that he mentioned that I took note of last night was, somebody asked, actually Scott Gravy asked, you know, help me, he said, "Help me connect the dots." You know, "All these things sound like good ideas, but if the developers go out there and want to build houses, then how do you keep that from happening?" And I'd never really heard anybody say this, but he said, "Well, you know, you guys run the utilities, and if, you know, if that's where the utilities need to be used, is in this type of a usage and not in that type of usage, you have a little bit of..." It's funny, which I thought was very interesting, hearing him say that other municipalities are doing that.
Your utilities infrastructure is the one handle that you have in your capacity to control the type of development that can occur. So, you're exactly right. To the degree to which the city advocates or employs a step system will be, in our minds, might be, it might diminish the strength of that tool.
Well, we've talked about this, just from the economic development side, that, you know, we have limited sewer capacity, but it's not necessarily the sewer capacity, it's the discharge that we have, because, you know, we can only discharge so much waste. So, when we're looking at these high-intense users that may be looking at some of our industrial property, and we have one user that has minimal discharge, and then we have someone else that may go into a more manufacturing-type business, that their discharge is going to be significant, then, you know, we're getting to the point to have to look to say, "Okay, we can't facilitate that..."
Yes.
"...without impacting someone coming later on down the line." So, we're starting to have to mesh all of those things together.
That's right. I've worked on eco-industrial parks in the past, where the waste stream of one industry becomes the feedstock of another industry, and you try to co-locate those industries together to afford that kind of efficiency. But that might be, in principle, something that, how you might approach this kind of dilemma. Just another Houston example. Houston, as you know, I'm sure we don't have zoning, and for, in a lot of ways, that's a really good thing, but because there are other tools in your toolbox that, where you can control and direct the kind of growth without the need of zoning. But in our downtown, buildings must be connected to our, we have this whole labyrinth of underground tunnels, this network of tunnels, that I never go down into, because I always get lost down there. So, in order to control or to ensure that our downtown is very compact, buildings, developers must create these underground tunnels and connect them to the system. So, that's one way that our infrastructure is being used, if you will, to ensure a compact and compatible form of development. So, again, your infrastructure is the one tool that you really have at your capacity right now to control.
Aaron, I think one of the areas that we may be overlooking in this process, and I haven't heard anybody mention doing anything like this yet, but the next time you come to town or in one of your future visits, I would like for you to go out and maybe visit some of our high school students, and see if we can bring, I was, because it's such, let's face it, they're going to enjoy this city much longer than some of us up here, Mike.
Indeed.
But beyond that, I was talking with a young lady who had just graduated from high school yesterday over on Jones Boulevard, and I was over there to discuss sidewalks and that type, bikeways and that type of thing. But beyond that, her conversation was, she pointed at Jackson Heights, and she said, "Wouldn't it be great if that was retail on the bottom and multifamily on the top?" And I said, "You need to come to the 2035 meetings and get involved." I said, "Because your vision is exactly what I think we're looking for." Also, I think we're probably, and I haven't heard anybody mention it yet, but I think we're overlooking the one opportunity that we have down the street, which is Nashville, as far as attracting more tourism into Murfreesboro, because, I mean, that's the best money we can possibly attract, is tourism dollars.
Yes, sir.
And I think we, I won't say we do a poor job of attracting tourism, we do have tourism, but I think there's that opportunity. We all can remember the Opryland Park and stuff. If there were an area in Murfreesboro that could be developed into an Opryland Park area, where we could bring those people down here and take advantage of those dollars that are available to us, that we simply are neglecting now, and it's 30 miles away, I think that would be a tremendous opportunity for us to look at, and I think that's an area that we need to go into at some point.
We have covered tourism, heritage tourism, and nature-based tourism within Chapter Six, our Parks, Recreation, and Open Space, but it's, I'll look to see how we can continue that conversation in Chapter Seven as well. You're exactly right.
But when we talked about it in Parks, it was more Stones River Battlefield, and the things that we have that are historical, and the tourist attraction that we've brought in traditionally. I think there's a step beyond that that we can go, that is an asset that we haven't tapped into at all, which is this country music thing that's taking place down the road. And, you know, we've got the IT City, and I think we're kind of part of the success of the IT City. But I do think, even beyond that, I think the important thing is that we make sure that when dollars are being spent in Middle Tennessee, that they get spent inside the city limits of Murfreesboro.
Exactly right. And we've tried to make that case in the chapter, we'll try to emphasize that further, because in general, what's good for Nashville ought to be good for Murfreesboro, and that's the way we need to adopt that kind of regional perspective, and try to pull some of the satellite components of these kind of industries, like the music industry, bring them down to Murfreesboro. And MTSU has several programs that are music-related, so from a production standpoint.
We've got one of the best music programs in the country at MTSU, so we're very fortunate.
Okay, well, we're going to be back in, again, mid-December. Any way that we can, you know, we had slated, our scope included three community workshops. I'm saying this because my boss, Brett Keest, is not here, but I think we'd be willing to entertain additional community workshops. Just, we're starving for feedback from not only you guys, but the general public. So, if we can make these things happen every time we're here, we're up for it.
It might be good for Mr. Tully to talk about a community survey. That's been part of the program from the very beginning, is a survey of Murfreesboro residents, and we didn't talk about that earlier this week. And I think the idea would be, after the first of the year, with the holiday season passed us, that we would look to have an online survey, where Murfreesboro residents can talk about what they want to see in the future, and go, that direct voice to them, where they can tell us their opinion.
Yes, we are going to conduct and distribute a community survey as part of our original scope. We are thinking about bringing on board another subconsultant who we've worked with in the past, to really provide the quantifiable, defensible layer of our survey. But we're going to start developing questions to feed to you all, to make sure that we're answering, asking the right questions, so the answers are what will help to inform the development, the continued development of this comprehensive plan. So, we're going to start working on that immediately, so I'm sure you guys will be seeing a lot of these draft questions that we want to send out to Murfreesboro citizens. This will be an online survey, but it can also be a hard copy survey that you add to your utility bill inserts, that kind of thing. So, that's something that will hopefully, again, inform the continued development of this plan.
Well, one of the things that I, we're beginning to kind of congeal a little bit of these ideas as to specific areas of interest, and I think that's maybe some of the reason that we haven't engaged some people in the process. They don't know exactly where they fit in, if they have a particular interest. But as we move from this phase of kind of formulating and exploring where we are and what opportunities might be out there, I think it might be helpful to the process that we identify those areas that people can plug into, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be this business incubator idea that's fascinating to me, and kind of piggybacking on what Eddie was saying, I think there's the natural connector between some of the musical roots of our community and what is presently happening at MTSU, and linking that story to Murfreesboro and our own community is a great tourist opportunity there. But, you know, be specific as to these different areas that are going to require some, and I don't know if workshop is the right word for what I'm thinking about, as we identify these areas, these groups start to work together to formulate specifically, what are we going to do in this area to address this opportunity? And then, you'll be giving, you'll be helping people find their passion and their interest, whether it be in business, or housing, or tourism, whatever those areas are, then that group meets separately in another, you know, not with the mass thing that was last night, where there's a lot of discussion. It's almost hard for the public to get their hands around, what, where do I fit into this? And you sit back, it's almost like the map that we saw, you know, you peel off that onion, and you see this particular page of that map, and it becomes comprehensible. But when you put all those layers on top of that map, y'all kind of, you go, you take a big breath and go, "I don't really understand what I'm looking at." So, I think it's time for us to begin that peeling back of the onion, identifying those specific areas that might find, people could find their passion in. And then, if it's an invitation, I mean, it can be open invitation to the public, but we can begin to identify staff and council and the public, identify those people in those areas that need to be at the table for this discussion, as we start looking for implementation, looking for goals, so that we really make, you know, we talk about putting meat on the skeleton, so we know that we've accomplished something other than just a document of papers. To me, that's real critical for the next few months, after the first of the year, when we look forward, as we start doing, you know, doing that, convening people who have expertise, who have a perspective, who have a passion for a particular area of this plan, and let them meet at the table together, and have not just a presentation, but let them be a part of the discussion. So, anyway, that's...
Well, what we can do on our end, we can start breaking this, the plan down into specific elements. We can feed that to city staff, and we can start together working on identifying those groups where these particular plan elements might resonate. So, I think that's an excellent idea. As we've talked about, having a, identifying a storefront downtown or somewhere where we can start displaying several, this plan consists of multiple maps that are highly relevant to understanding the land, kind of, or the geography of some of these key planning points. So, the more we can, like, display maps where people can congregate around them, look at them, digest them, put it on soak cycle for a while, come back, think about it some more, that's very important. So, now is the time to start doing that. Maybe Chamber of Commerce would be an excellent place for that, someplace downtown as well, and some of your parks, I think that would be important, community centers. We can't underscore that enough, and I know that it's very important to you all, you expressed this in the beginning of this whole program, about how important community engagement and developing that consensus around this is, it is important, so.
And to kind of play off what Bill's saying, because, I mean, that's kind of where I'm coming from, the high school students' approach, but if we had an event at each one of the high schools, say the four high schools, I think that would start peeling those layers back, so that you would have areas where, you know, the other night, I think we did a good job of giving people dots and having them mark the map and saying, "This is what..." But the problem was, the map is 55 square miles, and most people don't travel those 55 square miles on a daily basis. But they do know about the intersection at Thompson Lane and Memorial Boulevard. So, if you get off into the Siegel area, they're going to say what they want to happen with Thompson Lane, and what they want to happen with that particular area, as far as, I think that'll get it closer to home, where we'll get a better turnout and input than we're getting with this large vision that we're trying to present, because it's almost too grandiose for the average person to perceive. I mean, I think we deal with it enough, that when we talk about zonings and types, we kind of understand what we're talking about, but, you know, I spoke to a guy the other day, and he said, "I don't know how you go through some of the meetings you go through, because you'd just as well be speaking a different language than I normally speak." And I said, "I understand, because we deal with zonings and codes and stuff, and we've got all these acronyms and stuff that we use, that the average person walking down the street doesn't deal with that language, not that they're not capable of it, it's just that they don't hear it every day, so they're not used to it." And I think if we can break it down to more of a neighborhood feel on these conversations, that will get a feel for where they really want a sidewalk, or where they really want a bark park, or where they really want the multifamily that's going to be located in their part of town, I think then we'll get more information that we can really grab hold of and say, "Okay, this is where our city wants to go, not just where we're directing it." But that's the input that we're trying to pull from the public, is tell us what you want, because that's the important part, is we need their feedback. It's not just our vision, but it's their city.
Yes, sir. You're exactly right.
Well, I normally don't say much, Eddie, you know I don't, but I tell you what, if the federal government, and the state, and local folks don't figure out some kind of transportation funding, then you can have whatever kind of plan you want to have. But if you can't get where you want to go, you know, it makes no sense. And... And I encourage the public out there, some of the folks you even voted for, that won't have the courage to do what they need to do for transportation funding at the federal level, at the state level, and the local level, then I believe you're dead in the water. You know, because you cannot have the kind of growth you're projecting that we're going to have without alternative means of transportation between Nashville and here, right around here, and it's going to be costly, somebody's got to pay for it, it doesn't come for free. Most of this stuff is subsidized anyway, all your services are subsidized pretty much, but taxpayers, you know, you want this, but, well, I don't want to pay for it. So somewhere down the road, our community needs to be getting more engaged in the process. I'm disappointed that some are not engaged because they rely on us up here to take care of business, and I think we do a pretty good job, but sidewalks, Eddie and I both know sidewalks, pedestrian plan, I've talked to Rob about that, about a long-range pedestrian plan with sidewalks, and figure out, you know, where we need to start and do something, every year project, well, we're doing some sidewalks somewhere, you know, to get these people walking and riding bicycles or whatever. But transportation, getting from point A to point B, is going to be very, very critical in any kind of growing plan, and we better figure that out. And it's going to cost a little money, but I think in the long run, the public will be tickled. You know what I mean?
I agree with you 1,000 percent, Ron. It doesn't sound like we're campaigning for office up here when we start talking about gas taxes and stuff, but that's something that the state has to bite the bullet on and make that hard choice, because if you live in Woodbury or Oudewah, it doesn't matter if you get a new road, because all you're worried about is street maintenance, and that's what the state can afford to do now. Our state is not set right now to do any new projects, and growing communities like Murfreesboro and, say Chattanooga, I mean, areas that are growing are going to have to have the money to do the development of the Cherry Lanes and the Thompson Lane projects, and they're not going to be free. And, I mean, I don't like property taxes, and I don't like sales tax, and I don't like any of the taxes as far as that goes, but when you've got a direct user tax, if you're not looking at the gas tax seriously right now, then you're not being realistic with what the future holds, because if we're going to grow and we're going to develop, and you're not of the understanding that that's going to be part of the reality of what we're going to face in the future, then either they're going to take the money from you unhappily, or you're going to be more understanding of how we're going to have to subsidize it, but it's not going to just magically appear, as Ron's saying over there, it's going to have to be funded.
Yeah, I mean, I think the biggest concern is that if it's not paid for at one level, it just pushes down and gets, have to be paid for at another level. And somebody asked me the other day, I was speaking to a group, and they said, "What's the best advice you could give someone running for political office?" And I said, "Make decisions like you're not running again."
You're exactly right.
And that way, when you do that, you obviously may make someone upset, but you feel like you're making the right decisions, so.
You just do the right thing, that's it.
Aaron, we appreciate it. Have you got any, and I came in late, but do you have any of your staff you want to introduce? Do you have anyone here?
No, I'm all by myself.
Okay.
Brett and Greg will be joining me the next time we're up here, though.
Do you want to tell Ms. McGannon that you'll see her next time?
I was definitely going to approach Ms. McGannon.
All right. Ms. McGannon, this will be, this meeting, and this next meeting will be a lot of lighthearted jokes, I'd say, the entire meeting, so, all right. Any questions?
Journers.
All right.
Good.
Thank you. We need to close this meeting. We'll stand adjourned.